All right, do we have to make the pledge for the pledge for me?
The pledge is: elections to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Go through the roll call.
Ms. Alt, here. Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Here.
Dr. Thaler.
Here.
Mr. Ivey.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Ms. Ziegler.
Here.
All right. Everybody here? We'll move to... We'll move to approving... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, elected officials, I'm sorry. Roll call for elected official.
Mayor O'Leary.
Here.
Auditor Satterfield.
Here.
Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
All right, thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes of marching. Do you want to make that motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, motion. Ms. Durbin approved by Ms. Ziegler. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7-0, motion carried. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. I think there's a couple items on the agenda. All right, Mr. Watkins, motion to approve the items...
To add.
To add item ordinance number 2022-27 to the agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, seconded. Mr. Richard?
Mr. President, I have a question. How do we... If we have ordinance B, the 2022-21, and ordinance G, the 2022-27, both have the splash pad addressed, so Mr. Palmer, would it be advisable to make a motion to strike ordinance 2022-21?
The vote you have before you write down was very... Simply whether to add 27.
Okay.
If you want to do that, that would be something you'd do when that came out for consideration. Would be just a few minutes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Thaler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivey. Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
All right, motion carried, 7-0 vote. There's an additional ordinance. Dr. Thaler?
I'd like to make a motion to add ordinance 2022-28 to the agenda.
Right, Dr. Thaler? Seconded by Ms. Alt.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Thaler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivey.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-0 vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as a...
I'll make that motion.
All right, all in favor?
No.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry, seconded. I'm sorry. Mr. Richard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
7-0 vote. Moving on. So, the agenda's been approved. We have... We do have a citizen that wants to address council. We have Ms. Allerton, superintendent of Gaijin High School.
Mrs.?
I'm sorry? Yeah, Gaijin City Schools, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Am I okay here? Would you like me to come somewhere else?
Uh, so we can...
All right. I've been sick. I'm so sorry. I've been sick. I never get sick in Gaijin, so I apologize. Please bear with me. On behalf of the Gaijin City School District, and the past, current, and future children of our district, I would like to extend our gratitude for the many grant proposals that have been approved throughout the past years. These opportunities are a result of the generous wishes and contributions of longtime Gaijin residents Horace and Edward Fries, and by the majority vote of council. These projects have allowed us to make improvements to Umpridge Stadium that include handicap rails that allow citizens with physical disabilities the opportunity to enjoy our Friday night football game, to improvements of the softball and baseball fields that are not only utilized by the Gaijin City School athletes, but individuals from all ages, from our littlest tigers in town to our Gaijin Raiders team. It is my understanding that the school district may no longer be a recipient of grant dollars from the Fries Fund as a result of a recent legal opinion. I would respectfully request the council to consider that that legal opinion was applied to a very different situation rather than a relationship the district has in place with respect to parks. The district property is intertwined with that of the city and the park area, and plays an integral part in the overall high seat park complex. We view ourselves at the school district as partners in maintaining, improving, and providing our community a park experience to be proud of. Sorry. As a district, we take our part in making Gaijin the best community possible very seriously. The opportunities that we extend to our students beyond the school day, and the ability for the community to utilize these facilities, contribute to the overall positive experience for our students and its citizens. I'd love that our tiny tigers play on the fields all summer long while their parents and grandparents cheer them on. I'd love that our citizens walk on the track on beautiful days in Gaijin, and I'd love that our citizens park in our parking lot while enjoying a picnic to watch their children play on the best playground around. It is my hope that all of you express through your vote the wishes of Mr. Horace Fries and his handwritten will to dedicate and allocate these dollars to the upkeep or improvement of city parks, which includes the areas owned by the school district that our community utilizes each and every day. I also hope that you share in the opinion that it is a joint effort to provide our community an exceptional park experience. Thank you for your time. Please leave.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allerton.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to legislation. Ordinance number 2022-18.
Ordinance number 2022-18 entitled ordinance setting the power cost adjustment as required per ordinance number 2015-39 and declaring an emergency.
Discussion.
So, this is the second reading of this ordinance. It came through the Utilities Committee. We discussed for two months. We also discussed at the council meeting, the previous council meeting, and there were no questions raised during that time. And I have not, as chairperson of the Utilities Committee, received any questions or issues from members of council or from the community about increasing the PCA for the electricity so that we can keep up with the rising costs of utilities and what the power is costing the city. The Utilities Committee did its due diligence in discussing and having thoughtful talk and research with our power supplier. And I feel that at this time, it would be wise to move this on as an emergency because this rate is set so that it will kind of compensate for the next six months of time. So, are there any questions or any more discussion about PCA at this time?
Dr. Thaler?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2022-18.
Motion to suspend the rules. Seconded by Ms. Alt. Alt, I'm sorry.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins? Mr. Watkins? Ms. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Ivey?
No.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
No.
All right, we have a 4-3 vote. Three. So, we... Yes, we're not... We cannot suspend the rules. We must have six votes in order to suspend the rules. So, this is gonna be held for this reading. Or this next reading. The third reading will be next on the agenda next council meeting. So, I guess we're moving on to ordinance 2022-21.
Ordinance number 2022-21 entitled ordinance authorizing and directing the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract for a pad liner for the splash park together with necessary construction and declaring an emergency.
I would like to take this back to committee, please.
All right, so you're making a motion to take this back to the committee?
Do I need to make a motion or just...
Yes.
Okay, I make the motion to take ordinance 2022-21 back to committee.
Ms. Durbin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ivey. Roll call.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0 vote. Going back to committee. Ordinance number 2022-22. This is the first reading.
Ordinance number 2022-22. This is an ordinance by the city of Gaijin for the project of resurfacing urban paving. City of Gaijin, CRA 309-4.97, State Route 61 to 6.02 Richland Corp limit, and CRA 61-2.87 Harding Way East to 7.08 South of Etler Drive, Bridgewater at four locations.
Discussion. Ms. Durbin?
This is the... 661, right? Does that go all the way to 30?
Seconded.
Yeah, the project limits are... That wasn't true. That was a statement or question. It's 309, out past the airport, Richland County lines duly said. And the... The... On the road to Crestline, our part ends at the city limit, which I think is at 30 now. Remember, they detached. For the general information, I believe it goes all the way up into the village of Crestline, stops somewhere up there, but that's not... Our area is from Beano's or Tubby's or Watkins, Ohio, on out to the end. So, it splits at Gencor North Section and then the East Section. Those are the project limits.
2023?
Yeah. So, those... Those... Working on the 23 budget, myself, and I'm looking at the auditor, he's ignoring me. You know, that's a big... It's a big hit in the 23 budget. So, there's a committee. We talked a little bit about a couple of sources that we might apply to the... I believe our share is close to half a million bucks, so... Scary number. But I would make one comment if I might, Mr. President. That it's the... It's... It's... Has a lot to do with the large annexations that happened many years ago now. So, if that area, which I guess officially isn't the city of Gaijin, not many people... I don't consider that... That's that section. So, it had been very little in terms of local contribution. But the city said that they would maintain it, so that's how it works.
ODOT's covering environmental engineering costs.
Yeah, they're gonna... Everything there... They have responsibility. The top surface course, and then we share costs on anything below that, pavement repairs. There's like some manhole adjustments. There's some odds and ends of that that add up to that number. Yeah, the ODOTs... I think they have a million, roughly a millions on the legislation or on the document that they're putting in on their share and they require it. So, all we need tonight, if possible, is agreement that we're going to do the project and that there's no commitment of funds at this point. That'll... Of course, that'll come later. Hopefully, that explains.
So, the... Your... Would like a suspension of the rules to... And passage to indicate the commitment.
Yeah.
As I said, the dollars will come later in the...
Yeah, it'll be a 23. We'll have to put it in the 23 budget. So, what a marker there. It's kind of a big tab that we're gonna have to fill right off the... Right off the start of 23, but... Anyway.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2022-22.
Motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Thaler?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Richard. Roll call.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried, 6-1. Moving on to ordinance... Oh, that was a suspend rule. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion?
Well, if this president, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-22.
All right. Thanks for that motion, Mr. Richard. Seconded by Ms. Alt. Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. All right, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
No.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. 6-1. All right, now we're moving on to ordinance number 2022-23.
Ordinance number 2022-23 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-114, permanent 2022 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds, transferring funds, and advancing funds in various health department funds and declaring an emergency.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes, this ordinance came through finance, and there are, as we can see, 12 paragraphs dealing with dollar amounts. Every single one of them pertains to the health department. I'm sure that Auditor Satterfield will be happy to go point by point if we need an explanation. But if you have any questions on section, I would... We have two resources... Two resources here. Not letting out the...
Any questions?
And this is just appropriating funds that were received by grants from the health department. So, these funds were from grants that are going to be moved so that they can kind of pay those back. So, these are already funds that have been received or worked for just to get them moved into the right categories.
Is there a timing situation?
Yes.
Well, we also had to do a budget revision for the workforce development grant. And that's kind of guided by Crawford County because they do our COVID grants, and that's one of them. So, it was a timeline sort of...
Some are advances, authorizing advances into the health fund, into the health funds general fund.
If you think back...
Yep.
You advance money from the 230 fund, the general fund, to the grant funds to get them started. They've now received some money to the grant funds. We're advancing some of that money back to the 230 fund to clean up that. So, an advance is a payback. A transfer is typically not. So, we've advanced the money and now we'll bring it back. It doesn't clear... It doesn't clean it up completely, but it's kind of tidying up some of the paperwork and some of those advances in and out. And then allows for the health department to spend more money appropriately in the right funds. What you said, like you said. You'll see another one of these in the next six months or so to finish tidying up the grants and advancing the money back to the 230 fund as they collect the money for the other workforce grants or the HIV hearings, whatever we fund it.
I just... Andrea said the county. That'd be the county health department. So, I don't want to get the commissioners in the courthouse on the hook. Get any kind of confusion there. So, it's county health department. They're the recipients. We get sub-reception status. It's our share, so does... And so, that's a small issue, but it's probably worth... I think it's worth noting.
Thanks. Thank you. Dr. Thaler?
Yes, if there are no other questions, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2022-23.
Motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Thaler. Seconded by Ms. Alt.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
All right, motion passed, 7-0. That was a motion to suspend the rules. All right, we...
Mr. President? I'd be happy to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-23.
All right, motion passed, 2022-23. Mr. Ivey, seconded. Ms. Durbin, first. Ms. Ziegler?
Sorry.
Who seconded it?
Ms. Ziegler was first during there.
All right.
Discussion?
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-0. That was 2023-23. So, we're moving on to ordinance number 2022-25.
Ordinance number 2022-25 entitled ordinance approving decisions of the city of Gaijin Treasury, Investment Board, and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Dr. Thaler?
Yes, this ordinance also came through finance. The Treasury Investment Committee met, and there were two investment CDs that were coming due. And we needed to have a decision on what to do with them. Brian, who is our advisory company?
Meter.
Meter and Associates. Meter and Associates decided to basically reinvest them in other CDs. And, you know, as the mayor pointed out, the... It was a... The proceeds aren't... The returns aren't going to be great just because that's where we are. But it was decided that this was the best course of action. And so, we moved it out of finance committee and onto full council for consideration. Brian, do you have any other thing to add to that?
All right. One question is, if you look at the where it says above the italics, it says met on March 10, comma, 22. Do we need to change up to say 2022? Or is that... I mean, I think we all understand what it is, but...
I wouldn't consider that a clearable thing.
Okay. And the other... The other thing to add is, you know, I think from the Investment Committee is the recommendation was to keep these... To invest these in more short-term than long-term because right now the yield is higher in the short-term than it is in the long-term investment. That's why you're seeing these being reinvested in shorter term.
That was gonna be my question. Yeah. What is the current yield under the system that we have in place right now? If it's worth shooting at 1.7 for five years and 1.55, do you have any idea what we're... What we're... What we're... I don't, I'm sorry.
We can get it to you really quick.
Just curious.
Any other questions? Dr. Thaler?
Yes. If there are no other questions or comments, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2022-25.
Motion requested by Dr. Thaler, seconded by Mr. Watkins?
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion passed, 7-0, to suspend the rules and move to the final reading. Mr. Richard?
Mr. President, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-25.
Motion passed, 2022-25, by Mr. Richard. Seconded by Ms. Alt. Discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Thaler?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-0. And moving on to ordinance number 2022-26. This is the first reading.
Ordinance number 2022-26 entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to purchase under... Oh, shoot. The state purchasing program for 02125B without competitive bidding, three 2022 police interceptor vehicles from Yankee Ford Lincoln through the Ford Credit Municipal Finance Program and declaring emergency.
Do we have any discussion here? Dr. Thaler?
Yes. Third and last thing coming through finance. The then-Chief Satterfield, now Auditor instituted a program that enabled to replace police cruisers through this program. I believe, and he'll correct me, it's every three years that we would buy three cruisers from... And this was a discussion in the committee meeting whether the Ford dealership was going to remain the same. Ms. Ward, I guess that there were... They met the lower price?
Yes, Brian, they beat the state purchasing price. But most of it didn't, so it wasn't very...
Good. And that's the dealership with whom we've been dealing with for years. Where are they out of again? Brian?
Chief, primary is hearing my...
I'm sorry, Chief Rary.
Actually, I have a kind of strange one. I believe it was out of three months.
Okay. Chief, can you add anything to the... This for us?
Um, just that they're due. I mean, the cruisers that we have now, it's pretty inefficient. They're in the shop more than they're on the road, I think. So, it's obviously a necessity so we can maintain safe operations and quick response times so that there's uninterrupted service to the citizens of Gaijin. But other than that, yeah, it's at a lower cost. So, it means a definition by state statute to go with a third party other than that they receive the state bid. At the time, we weren't aware that we had to go with state bid. Through the Ford municipal leasing, it was pretty much around the same price.
Through the four municipal leasing, it was pretty much around the same price, so that was a learning curve for myself. But it definitely complies with the state statute at this point.
Good, thank you, Ms. Durbin.
Uh, Chief, primary is, are these just, just basic explorers and then you add equipment?
Correct.
Okay.
And emergency equipment will be purchased through a third-party vendor because we didn't want to finance the install of the equipment. Didn't think that was probably most advantageous to the citizens to finance that over that period of time. So we'll pay for that separately from the financing for the cruisers.
Can you take any of the equipment out of the old one and put in the new, or do you have to use it?
No, yeah, we looked at that, but because of the Ford changing the design of it and everything, yeah, it only, yeah, it only new equipment.
And approximately, what does that cost per vehicle?
I believe it's around 15,000, I think it's what we budgeted per vehicle. Then includes the graphics as well as the emergency equipment for the install.
Okay, thank you.
Total, right, 15 grand total?
Yes.
Yeah. Right.
Mr. President?
Yes, Paul?
There's going to need to be at least one amendment made to this ordinance. Julie, I'm not aware of which you sent out with the packet.
It's the one that was passed our committee, what's in the packet, so.
Okay, so...
And I didn't learn about the other one, so...
To begin with, and the caption has to read RC 124, 125.04C instead of B.
124...
125.04.
I'm sorry, 125.04B, I'm C.
Yes.
The bottom minus B becomes C.
Yeah, and remove the state purchasing program.
Right. You're referring to section one there, Julie?
And in the caption.
Okay, good, yes.
In both places, you have to add C to 125.04C there and then remove under purchase, purchase pursuant. You just move on under the state purchasing program.
Correct, that's it.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to make, make the amendment to ordinance 2022-26? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 2022-26 to remove the words "under the state purchasing program" and to change the code from 125.04B to 125.04C.
Perfect.
Any?
Yes.
I'll second motion to amend, Mr. Ivey, by Dr. Felner.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Motion to amend, uh, the ordinance 2022-26 has been carried at seven oh. Dr. Felner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on amended, well amended, ordinance 2022-26.
Motion to suspend the rules by Dr. Felner, seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
No.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the final reading on 2022-26 was passed with a six-one vote. Mr. Ivey, there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-26. Motion to pass 2022-26 by Mr. Ivey, seconded by Mr. Richard. Do we have a discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh. All right, moving on to ordinance number 2022-27.
Ordinance number 2022-27, entitled ordinance requesting the trustees of the Agbert M. Freeze Foundation to distribute income therefrom to the City of Galleon for the purposes outlined herein and declaring an emergency.
Discussion?
My mind, I'll, I'll lead off the discussion, Brian. Okay. It's an annual ordinance, I want to take a second and kind of explain the several steps in the process. First step is, and this has been in effect for every year since we paid off the debt. So that was passed by council and when we knew the money was coming. And that set up the advisory board. Council president, mayor, service director, and an appointee of the mayor and council president. That's kind of how council set it up to begin with, okay? That group met last Thursday and reviewed the applications that had been submitted the Friday before, I believe, yeah. So that's what that group started out with. One other thing worth mentioning, and some may remember, is that we received an initial letter from the Freeze Foundation Board of President that our application would be 540,000 plus in that neighborhood. After the, after the advisory group met, we got a reduction, I'll, I'll get, get to that in a second. That's reflected in the ordinance under the third whereas, fourth whereas, that new number. Okay, so first step is Freeze Advisory Board reviews applications, prioritizes, try to make all the applications fit the available funds, and then votes out that recommendation to council. So that's, step two is tonight. And so as soon as possible, I, I'd recommend, we should, council should consider passing that so that that ordinance can be sent to the Freeze Foundation Board, who will then ultimately decide whether the projects meet their view of the probate document. Okay, so that's, so this is step two in what's traditionally been a three-step process, well, will be a three-step process. So I wanted to take a few minutes and outline that. So I think, I read some things that, that seemed to, like that was unclear. Specifically that the Freeze Foundation's approved, they haven't seen it. As I look at this project, I however will say that I don't see any what would be considered ineligible project. A few years ago, there were some historical society projects, 501(c)(3), uh, the board passed them on, council passed them on. They got to the foundation, they said, no, 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 and amended that. So it's, it is with precedent that you got to let them decide. I think we've learned from that, and I believe all of the projects, Roman numeral one to Roman numeral mine, all meet that criteria from the foundation. That's our expectation. The, and so that's, I guess, if there are any questions about that? Any questions about the projects, what's entailed, what do we? Oh, anything?
What is, what is the YMCA daycare facility improvements?
It is, um, it's probably, I would describe it as miscaptured. It's, there were two projects that were, I mean, that's how they submitted it. So I'm not being that mad in a mean way, we had miscaptured. It is perhaps better described as improvements in, on city property to the outdoor facilities at the Wise Daycare Facility. Okay, it is linked, part of the, didn't ask this question, does that answer the, your question? That's what it is, it's the, it's the daycare facility in Heisey Park.
Okay, are you talking about that outside playground area that is, is that part of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
It actually will be a new area.
It would be a new area.
A new area to, to the west of that, which will include fencing and, there's going to be some demo, that's not included in the request, but... If you know where the shuffleboard courts are?
Yeah.
That's the proposed location of the daycare facility.
Oh, okay.
It has, if I might, it, it has to move in order to accomplish Roman numeral I. What's now the kids' playground, it will become the location of pickleball courts. So you got to, you got to root the daycare center out, provide a facility for them. This is at a 25-75 clip, isn't it?
Correct.
So, so that's, that's what that was.
I think this is, this is a topic that I, I think that a lot of people have interest in, what we, what we're doing for the parks and the, and the children and...
Right.
Things like that. I think it's important just to note that there's nine projects on this list. Pickleball courts, splash park, resurfacing, the daycare facility, the stadium parking lot, Kobe Park, restrooms, engineering site for, for Gill Avenue parking lot, the bike path fencing. There's some various cameras at the parks and, and then fencing for Pico. So just, just for those who might have access to that.
So I don't know if there are other questions about the, probably better to go back, but...
I guess I still have a hard time imagining where you're talking about, for the YM, for where you're... So if you're at the YMCA, I'm thinking like across the street from that.
Yeah, out back.
Out back.
The, you're talking daycare and pickleball now?
Oh.
Yes?
Daycare.
Yeah, that's out, both of them are out back. In your minds, I visualize the band shelter.
Okay.
It's just to the south of that, that'll be the pickleball court.
Okay.
And to the, yeah, the old tennis court, to the west of that will be the, will be the new daycare facility.
So the old tennis court now is where the kids run and play around?
Yeah, it's their indoor recreation.
Or the shuffleball courts.
Yeah, they're now on what were once tennis courts, have long since been turned into the play area outside.
And that'll be area that anyone can use, it doesn't have to be a YMCA daycare child.
Yeah, I think within, since I think the discussions with the Y leadership is when, you know, the kids are in session, they're gonna, but there's not going to be lot, you'll be able to access that. Not sure with all the other places you could play at Heisey Park, why, why you would want to go there, but, but it won't be exclusive to that.
And then the Gill Avenue parking lot, is that the parking lot that's already there by the pool? Or is that going to be a new parking lot?
It's, it is the area immediately to the east of the current parking lot. It's kind of a playground, it really runs from the bathrooms to kind of to the north that sit there. And it's, um, in that section, uh, starting near where the bathrooms are and heading south to about, I think there's a drawing if we can get it to you, but it is, it leaves about a third of that green space remain as green space.
Because I know whenever I initially looked at this, when I saw the YMCA daycare facility improvement, I thought, I didn't think that last year, I think it was whenever we had the discussions that, that wasn't the way it was leaning. But maybe you were right, it just wasn't a great, well, description of what it is.
Well, it's a 501(c)(3), they're eligible under the current ordinance to buy, they did. The accommodating, some concerns about ownership of property, it'll remain city property. This passes, it goes through the Freeze process, it'll probably be operationalized with a long-term lease. A lot like the Y itself. But I think, I, I, I think most of the people at this table, most of, not all, of the people at this table realize that the YMCA was, is, is built on city ground. And so that's not, the Y doesn't own any of the land there, they own under this.
And then there's one more question.
Yeah.
So Mrs. Alt, her name came in and spoke in the beginning.
Yeah.
And was the concern for the stadium parking lot?
I think so, that's their project, that's the project that they submitted this year.
Ms. Durbin?
What is the project at Pico Park?
It's, uh, I think it was mentioned, it is a request to put new, new fences out there, new outfield fences. That, that, the, we're going to have to come up with something that's, uh, that can be removed. But if you were to go out there, that fencing's really pretty, pretty old, we've got our use out of it. So that was their request again. We don't want to preclude the use of those fields for adult softball. Heck, that's why it was built, to be a men's league, you know, things happened, quite a bit has happened since then, but I think there's off and on interest in getting adult co-ed or non-co-ed league. We had a church league, I think one year used it. So I think what we're worried about is if you put up chain link fence, kind of your traditional outfield fence, then you cut the fields down significantly and made it just youth, so.
And I know one other thing that we didn't talk about was that the number of projects that are usually given is hard to get that accomplished. Does this seem like a workable list of stuff to get done?
Well, I, I don't know, uh, we hope so. With the, there's always from the very first year, delivery in the year of the money, delivery of the project to the public in the year that council acts on it, it's been devilish every year. You know, I look at some of these, um, and so, some can and will get accomplished this year. I think probably all of them. The exact locations of the 10, that's where the 25 security camera. We may be trying to make final decisions on, on that, but that, that might be the only slow one, slow delivery one.
I'm really, sorry, only one more question.
Yeah, keep going.
So, um, so I guess as we intend to add all of these additions and upgrades to our, are we having any issues with maintaining the upgrades or like keeping them nice and, and well working orderly? I know that we've had some of those restrooms for a while in the nature, where it's been rammed, and I see now that we're adding splash pad for 80,000 to the splashways. Do you think that it's also feasible to continue to keep up on all these projects within kind of our current budget? Or do you foresee us going back to the Freeze Board and asking for ways to keep up on this? Like if the, the lining at the splash pad, if it gets damaged and it is costly to repair, would we look at replacing that out of the safe budget or, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, I, I try to answer your question, we have been absorbing in the park's operating budget, uh, 15, 17,000 dollars with the damage to the new playground in the park. It settled down during the winter, I imagine it'll spin up again. Uh, and the same with some of the vandalism in the, in the bathrooms. We haven't come back to the Freeze Foundation for that. Another part of the, didn't maybe ask this specifically, but there is a project that fell out of this list that we intend to do because it needs to be done, and that's the, the repainting of the tennis courts. So if you, if you were to drive by, drive by and look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about. If you get out of your car, you, you may feel your, your blood begin to boil because the longevity on those surfaces, the painted surface hasn't been what we hoped. If the next ordinance passes, when it passes, that's one of the projects we intend to do out of the infrastructure. I can, I can get to that, but that's a, that is, it, I think it's a fun kind of challenge to have, Ms. Alt, to be able, you know, to be able to maintain and upgrade in the case of the splash park. You know, we're really, I think, intend on making it better, so. I don't know, yeah. Anybody on the, on this engineering site work, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. I was going to say, engineering site work, they had a request, and all that stuff is submitted, so I think it's, you'll want to look at it, for another project on the Y property, request for more parking. for another project on the Y property, request for more parking. And there just wasn't enough money. We were shuffling out a project. We were, and then we, and then we got that haircut of, what was it? $80,000-ish? So that shrunk from 4'5", 4'40" to whatever this is tonight's, 4'7". So we, we had to adjust a little bit there to make it fit. One of the adjustments is the agreement that we'll propose to fund the engineering and site work. Think in your minds, there's a lot of leveling of that ground that's gonna have to do. And we can get that done this year. I don't think we would've gotten all of that in bidding and selling and paving the project this year. So I think splitting it in half did two things. One, now we have a set of plans. And I think there'll be, I anticipate some questions from the neighborhood and I wouldn't be surprised if there are a couple of neighbor, neighbors who won't like the project. And so anyways, does anyone remember when that was, when that was last proposed? It's been quite a while. The Y wanted to do this before there were Freeze funds. And it, it got some neighborhood opposition. Well, anyways, we tend to approach that a little bit differently. The other thing I'd wanna say, I think they've got close to 3,500 members. So those of us who need the support of the public to stay, you know, effective and to run for ops if you want to, it's 3,500 folks, man. So it's sitting here, the Y is a significant quality of life factor in the county. So I'm, I'm of the opinion we wanna accommodate its, its current needs and then some, some future growth that they wanna have.
The restroom at Kobe Park, is that gonna be similar to the restrooms?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be as cheap and cheesy as all the rest of them. Yep.
Mr. President? My question about, since we learned tonight from the superintendent's presentation that a portion of the Freeze Foundation is to be allocated for maintenance and repairs within the parks. What, how, what are we planning on as far as budgeting for upcoming repairs or maintenance in the parks out of this $470,000? Just an observation.
The $80,000 splash pad.
That doesn't, I mean, that's not exactly maintaining all the parks.
It's an upgrade to one that the Freeze Fund already did and an upgrade to Kobe Park. An upgrade to the light panel.
Well, I guess that's how I interpret, maintaining it. Yeah, and it's a significant percentage in that will for maintenance and upgrades in the parks.
It's gonna be important, I would just, not split hairs, but the, it, the will and the probate are different. It's in that probate document that there is that set aside for maintenance of the facilities. It's not in the will, it's in the probate document. And so, but there's, but to answer your question with a one-word answer, no, there, none of these projects, except the parking lot and what Miss Allard already mentioned, the upgrades and maintenance of, of facilities. So I'm not, yeah, we didn't ask for any of those dollars that way. There's still such an ongoing request for funds on, on new stuff, if you will. But clearly, Uncree Stadium parking lot, that's, I think that might even satisfy that percentage mark. That, what is it, 1/8th or whatever it is on the maintenance requirement? Oh, is it 1/8th of the remaining?
It is 1/8th. The, the Uncree slot would be applicable, but yes.
Based on what? It's, it's maintaining existing infrastructure. So, all right.
Is, is it correct in saying that the pickleball courts are renovation of the old tennis courts and the Y as well?
It's kind of reuse, but the...
Those tennis courts haven't been used since I, the Y though.
Shuffleboard's pretty, that's, that's a very high-demand activity.
One more question.
Yeah, a hundred more questions, yeah.
Okay, is the fencing at the bike path, is that just standard or chain link?
Yeah, it's four-foot chain link. I think we're gonna anticipate a gate. It will be on city property, but it's largely designed to, to provide a physical barrier for the township residents in the, in the park. I, that's all I'll say. We had one resident, the public lady, who was concerned. Of course, they're property owner, that, you know, they're part of that subdivision, but they're right up against where the bike paths.
Mr. President?
Yeah, the other question I had, mayor, security cameras. See, they're on there. Do we, how many do?
We think we'll get 10 based on the chief thinks he found a camera that will allow us to look at license plates.
There you go.
So right now, what we've got, that helps identify people at the cameras that are protecting the newest playground. But they're, we've not had an occasion to use that in juvenile court or adult court on that. So I, there's some, we wonder if it gives us enough acuity. And I think in terms of enforcement of illegal activity in all of the parks. I never thought I would live to be that old that I would be into Brave New World kind of 1984 stuff, but I just don't know any other way to protect it. So anyways, that's, I over answered the question, but we think we're gonna get 10 of them for 2,500 and, and then we'll decide how to get the best coverage at, you know, at all, kind of at all around the park. So doesn't answer Aaron's question really, but it's kind of lame, though. I mean, the, the best maintenance, this is what Amp will tell you about, not about saving electricity, but the best maintenance is to stop the damage from happening. And so that's the most of the maintenance money that we spend out of 204. I, I understand where you're coming from on that, I take it. But it's, there'll be money, non-Freeze dollars used for park maintenance.
Well, most, most folks that I'm sure that are watching, he does not realize that those various items out there that the kids play on, even though maybe a little, little bitty thing, is very, very, very expensive to the tune of five, six, seven, $15,000. So it's not, it's not just out there kicking a can and, and dentsing a can type of thing. It's, it's serious citizens' money that's being destroyed. So the camera's good.
What I was gonna say is that the, if we can evolve out of the parents doing the behavior management on other parents' kids, that'd be a good thing. That's kind of what's happened down there. We haven't had a situation for, where one parent literally took the situation into their hands, but if that were to happen, I think to have a good video record of, you know, how, as I say, how it came to blows would probably be a good thing. So anyway, over talking, I think it's 10 cameras.
Where's your various locations at? Just curious.
Uh, you know, someplace at South Park for sure. Not sure how wide of the, we have not had damage to the bathrooms down there in a while, but that is, that is really pretty significant. One or two at Kobe Park.
Couple East. You got Splash Park covered already, don't you?
No, we don't have Splash Park. So many, we're not, we're, we use the chain link fence prevention out at East Park. Yeah, I mean, I, the, somebody help me on them. I mean, the, there's 10 of them. We don't need them, we won't buy them, but I think we'll have, what we'll do is identify our best choice and see if anybody, not sure. Some of the unwanted activity at AMIC's, I'm, I've been advised is, we've corrected that, so there's largely just fishermen out there who are fishing. Things in the reservoir, not just fishing. And so I, you know, I'm not sure that might be a location, might be a location. So anyways, good question. We'll get you the list of them. I don't have it tonight. In fact, I'm not gonna decide. I think they're over there. Those three, leave that, those three over there are gonna be, who will really identify those locations and get it accomplished, so.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you for the questions.
Yes, that was a good discussion and important projects, as we noted. I'm glad that we're including the schools once again. And if there are no other questions or discussions, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-27 on to the final reading by suspending the rules. Motion passed 2022-27 by Dr. Thelmer, seconded by Ms. Ziegler.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. All?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-0 vote. So we'll move on to the second reading.
No.
No.
That was suspension of the rule.
Right.
I'm sorry.
That'll be the pass.
All right.
If you like, Mr. President, I'll make the motion to pass 2022-27.
Motion to pass 2022-27 by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Watkins. Discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. All?
Yes.
Motion carried with a 7-0 vote. Moving on to ordinance 2022-28.
Ordinance number 2022-28 entitled Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2021-114 Permanent 2022 Appropriations by Appropriating from Unappropriated Funds in the Recreation Fund and Declaring Anarchy.
Discussion?
Where did this come from?
We didn't go to that in the agenda tonight.
Oh, this is my, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I believe that the mayor alluded to it earlier, so if he could just continue on, please.
The, I don't know, 70-year-old pool, it's pretty old, isn't it, Mr. Watkins, 70 years old? I know, it seems like, so anyways, Heisey Park, the pool's been there. We have not put significant money into the maintenance of that pool. There's a, there's a feeling, a concern that we're, you know, that if we had a breakdown, let's say a few summers ago, the pump, we had issues with the pump. If something like that happens, the first five in section two goes to that category. You know, thinking there, again, in the parks budget, there's two halves. There's the parks and then there's what was called miscellaneous recreation. The second one is, although it doesn't get at Mr. Ivey's question about using Freeze Fund for maintenance, it is, this is, this $45,000, it really goes to three maintenance projects. Two roofs, one at the equipment slash utility building at Pico. Far west end of the parking lot, we store a lot of our summer maintenance stuff and it's been used, since it's been built, to store equipment used by teams out at, at the facility. It's got a leak in it, it's passed, you know, it's, we're, if it were a house, we'd have a bucket. So that's, that is one item that, when we did the budget last fall, none of us were quite sure what there'd be as far as any sort of carryover in 204. So we just didn't appropriate more than we were confident that we had. It appears that there is going to be a little bit of carryover and that's where this money would come from. The second one is, I'm not sure if this is the third version or just the second of the first income tax-funded project. Back to the history of that, it's the concession stand slash equipment room at Heisey Park. The Little League field's down there. They've got, needs replaced, they've got similar leaking problems. And then the third one is what Dr. Thelmer was mentioning that I, I referred to before. It is the necessary maintenance on the new tennis courts. And so that would be three projects out of that $45,000. That's what we anticipate. So anyways, sooner the better. And the urgency is, we'd like to get the contractor out, the person that we identified for the roofs at the lowest quote, send it, hold their price. And so I wanna try to get going on that as soon as council approves it, so.
Mr. Ivey?
Mr. President, I'm making a motion to suspend the rules on 2022-28 and proceed to a final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules to the final reading by Ms. Ivey, seconded by Ms. All.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. All?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carried with a 7-0 vote to suspend the rules and move to the final reading. Mr. Richard?
While we, I agree with the mayor that these things really, we need to be moving on because we're not getting it since when they're gonna be used. So with that statement, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-28.
Motion passed, 2022-28 by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mr. Ivey. Discussion? No discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes.
Ms. Ziegler?
Yes.
Ms. All?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Dr. Thelmer?
Yes.
Motion carried with a 7-0 vote. All right. Moving on to other business, we wanna talk about committee meetings. Is it from the committee meetings?
Yeah, I think it's not where they are.
I guess I'll start, even though mine's, next month, it would be, what's that?
They all are next month.
Yeah, April 5th, which is a Tuesday at 7 o'clock here, laws and ordinances.
Okay, Tuesday 5th, 7:00 p.m.?
Monday is Wednesday, 6, 7:00 p.m. here.
April 6, 7:00 p.m.?
We'll have agenda items. I'm certain on both of those.
And the police fire help committee will be 4/7?
4/21 at 7.
I'm sure development will be on Tuesday night, the 19th, welcome, agenda items as well, so.
April 19th at 7?
Yes.
I'll have Mark Rantley get ahold of you or he can get ahold of Julie. The ESID, who's been here a long time to remember the ghost of ESID. There's a, there's a development project in an existing Galleon building that he thinks that a energy spatial improvement district would, would be a real key financial assistance incentive to get that project moving.
I'll reach out to you and Matt and see if you've got anything on the agenda and like tell them.
Yeah, they've got that for sure, so I don't know, that, that would be one. I'm not gonna try to explain an ESID, but I think he would, I think he'd be able to answer questions. We did, if those people recall, we did that with, there was an effort to do that to... We did if those people recall, we did that with there was an effort to do that to enable energy improvements for buyers. And it it never materialized. Largely because the owner of the building would not allow that special assessment to be put on its taxes. So in this one, it appears that the buyer and the renovator are going to be the same. And so it might work for this one, so.
Okay. Mr. Durbin?
Um, I need to discuss this further with Julie. Julie, I talked about it before, having parks and recs at the parks. What is your what is your feeling on that, Julie, since you set this up?
Yeah, with the with the new cameras, if we can get the Matt and I are going to be talking with somebody about getting like a hotspot so we can do that with these cameras. I should I I I would be able to do that.
I believe that. Well, then, April the 13th is the parks and recreation committee meeting, and we're going to have it at East Park.
What time? 7:00?
I'm sorry, what?
At 7:00?
The 13th.
Yeah, what time?
Oh, 7:00 now.
I just want to make sure. I assume so.
No, let's have it at 10:00.
Well, I assume so, but I wanted to make sure. Dr. Thelmer, this finance committee, 7:00 P. M., April 13th. Ms. Alt?
Is there going to be rain or anything during that outgoing meeting? Like, you could have to, like, advertise that it's going to be changed to a different location?
He used to work.
Look at Saban's.
They got still doing, they got the gap.
I was thinking about playing. The main lounge comes in.
Yeah.
There's showers briefly around 1:00.
Mr. Bodkins? 3:00, I would, on the 14th, am I correct?
You are correct.
Thank you. So 7:00 P. M. Thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone.
How can I the the committee members, they could come with that list of streets that are their least favorite streets so we can couple that with the recommendations, the service department. I the I think it's too late to get in on the first part of the paving season, so we'll have to think a little bit about when we get that bid to try to get, you know, the the best bids we can for that. And I also would like to, if possible, at that meeting, follow up on the alley discussion that was just kind of introduced a meeting ago. Was it committee meeting? Again, there was a letter from a resident there who's concerned about a particular alley. So I think in allocating funds, there there's probably a need to look at how we whether or how we make a longer term commitment and how you prioritize alleys. So that's I think to ignore it's probably not right to just pave surface streets, but it's it's we got to be we have to understand what we're getting into once we start attacking the alley issue of problems.
If there's no other business, Mr. Satterfield has an expense year, the expense report. If you would like that.
Sure. Thanks. The bi-monthly report, if you will, hot off the presses from today. Page one is expense report month to date. Expenses are 653,965. We're about 19%. For the end of the month is 25% of expenses expended. Page two, I apologize, I didn't front and back it, so I. Page two is the revenue month to date. We're at $2.1 million collected. Year to date, we're at 6.5. Again, we're just shy of 20% of the week to go. We are staying up to date with our revenue posting daily in the office. The the next two pages are combined again. I will tell you, we're getting closer, but we are not there yet. So you have the 2021 year end state of the cash position on the first and next two pages. Then the following two pages are the year to date state of the cash positions for all the funds for 2022. I know we've talked at length over over different times. You look at the 605 fund, even at the 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 year end 2021, you see that encumbrances going down because we're we're posting those payments. We are units today was posting November's payments. And hopefully, very soon, we're going to get all the all the electronic fund transfers, if you will, our blue jackets posted in the system. And anything that had been expended that wasn't showing in the system will be there. Now, there's still going to be encumbrances across the board because there's open purchase orders for 2021 still out there, but the money that has been spent should be posted in the very near future. So you'd have to basically take the 2021, if you look for the unspent balance, 22.4 million. Go to the last page and the unspent balance year to date is at plus $4 million. So you're looking at without encumbrances about 26 million is what it is. Then you take the encumbrances off. And again, that's not completely accurate because money has been spent, 21 hasn't been posted yet. Making significant progress in the office regards to the 2021 reconciliations. You should have gotten August, not too long ago, maybe for the last meeting. I am not quite ready to send out September yet, but fingers crossed we close September today. I want to have sitting cadre look at that before we we go on it. And October payroll is reconciled, and we're hopeful to get do some damage on October reconciliation for the offering tomorrow. November, I will tell you, point blank, is going to be a challenge. That's when we caught up a significant amount of the deductions for the employees pensions, deferred comp, federal taxes, state taxes that had that that kind of went for a period of time last year, shouldn't be paid, and they have paid. And some additional payments that we didn't know that had already been made. So I'm I'm not going to the office know that it's it's a matter of fact. We basically spent, in my estimation, about $96,000 too much to the IRS because there were there were taxes that we didn't think they got paid that actually had gotten paid, and they were paid yet. That's going to be my little headache to the IRS. But I'm not going to I'm not going to hide the fact that that didn't happen. So and what what that entails for me is that we got to create invoices to pay those bills for October, for November, and then document all that stuff so that when we publicly reimburse that money, that we we put it back in the right spots. So there's a potential that you'll see fund balances in 2021, especially if you look at a detailed report, Medicare, federal, not so much, it's it's going to be Medicare fighting because it was the matching amounts that we paid out of the operating fund when I shouldn't have paid out of the payroll fund. The the fund balances may upside down at the end of the year. I can explain it to the auditors. I've been in communication with the state auditors. The lady that's going to do our GAAP audit is actually helping me right now in to try to get the situation under control with with the reconciliations. They're aware of it, to say that Dr. Your finding is inaccurate, but we can explain why it happened. So, you know, there were there were mistakes that were made, but we're going to correct and moving forward. So I think once we get through November, December should clean itself up pretty well. And then we'll be able to close this, and I won't have to give you two reports. I'll just give you a fund balance because we can't transfer the funds, as we've said over and over, we can't transfer that ending balance from 21 to 22 until we close November. I will certainly answer any questions if I can.
Mr. Satterfield?
I've got a question or just an observation. That first page, I don't think you want to print 70 pages, but I think that the first page, it's worth going through at your leisure or consider it paid time going through that all 70 pages because there's a lot in that expense report that I think is important to look at.
Certainly could PDF file instead of do it if you want.
They get don't they get a report for all the expense, revenue and fund balances?
That's sent out by the office.
I think I think UNICEF sends that out with with when the month is closed. I think that's part of the package that goes out. But if I mean.
Y'all get that? I mean, my question is, do you get that?
The most recent one I got is August 21.
Okay, well, I mean, I just think the this this gives you the snapshot at the bottom. That was my own comment. If I could have a second, this, I guess, could turn into my report. When it comes to 20218 and what was a very close vote, surprisingly close to me, I would ask you to take a look at the last page of Brian's, that that informational report, and you see that's the that's how much more we've spent than we've taken in this year. So while it's every no one in this room wants to raise utility rates a penny more than we need to, you can see we're losing money. So our expenses, our guides and our contracts that we have, there are not many of those at this time of year, but our power bill, that's that's why we need the PCA. So spend I would ask you to spend some time on that. The other thing that I see coming next committee meeting in the utilities committee meeting is the the council needs to do something about the sewer rate and sewer situation. So you can see that we're we've lost, we've spent 30,000 more than we've taken in. That's after two months, two and a half months. So the estimate in the budget that some people voted for, some didn't, some were here, was that that we would lose $200,000 in that sewer fund this year. So I don't know. I have to do the arithmetic in my head. I think that's probably we're probably on budget. So we've lost in does that do you know if that has this month's collection and that 30 grand number?
Yeah, I mean.
That does have revenue for this month's collect collection.
Collection, revenue is up to date.
Yeah, but the big rush, I know that, but the big rush, people are paying yesterday, today, the day before. We even collect about almost half the money the last couple of days of the cycle.
Yeah, actually, I think tomorrow was you're expecting about a $90,000 kicking in the that's the A.
Yeah.
Yeah, this once a month is we get a big chunk that comes in.
Right. So I the I we need to assess whether or not that third the 30 is a is a concerning number. And again, to to repeat myself, I don't believe anyone in elective office wants to raise the utility tariffs, rates, whatever you want to call them, a dollar, a penny, any more than they need to be. But there is this issue of covering our expenses that y'all have to do. So I I thank the four of you that that see the need for the PCA and and making appeal to the other three to be able at least to articulate why you're against the the recommendation. One of the no votes voted on the committee, didn't they? I think so.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's you and Mike? Yeah, cool. Well, thank you.
Hate to skip over you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I would I'll be done. I got the message. I'll be done. Somebody's got Curse Oak Island.
I would like to join those, thank you, Mrs. Allarding, for being here. We've met one time. It was like the first week or very shortly after you started. I wanted to say a couple of things in terms of an FYI. I did not participate during the time that there was the freeze ordinance being discussed today primarily because I have a conflict of interest. You may not realize this, but I am the attorney for the city of Galleon, but I also statutorily am the attorney and attorney for Galleon City Schools and Galleon Board of Education. This is the first time in eight years plus that I've ever felt like there might be a conflict. So I did not participate. But what I would like to share with you is that I think there'd been some very respectful discussion going on downstairs. I had a couple of initial questions about one of the freeze projects. And I I think going forward, not only for that particular project, but just in general, I think we probably are at a point where we would all benefit, the schools in the city, from getting a little more more clarity in terms of the freeze distribution where schools are concerned. I completely agree with Mrs. Allarding about the legal opinion that has been received by the city in in the last couple of years, not dealing with the schools and dealing with a third party, and that is very different. The schools are mentioned in the will. The schools are the part of the distribution process from the point of view of scholarships. But I at the same time, as much as we may have a desire to do the best by our kids, no matter if you're looking at it from the city's perspective with parks and recreation or from the school's perspective, we have to abide by legal documents. And so I'm just sharing with you that I think we would all benefit from some clarity so that we can be all on the same page as we move forward. And so that's why I didn't share anything at the time. Just looking into it, and that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Palmer? Yeah, I think there's some there's there's quite a few great projects on on the list. We're addressing a lot of safety safety items, and I I was just just happy to see an article about pickleball being I don't play pickleball, but it's the most popular sport. If you look it up, I think on, if you talk to Google, it Google will tell you that it's, I think, the most popular sport in America right now. So or fastest growing, I'm sorry, fastest growing sport in America right now. Not maybe not the most popular, but the fastest growing.
It's the fastest growing sport among seniors.
Yeah. I believe that as well.
Seniors have the largest demographic in the country right now.
Right.
It's it's a sport that that it's it's not as strenuous as tennis.
Sure.
And it doesn't take as much space in the tennis court either.
Right. Right. Right, right, great. So I think it's a great use of 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 those those courts that we they haven't been used in a long time. And we all know that Kobe Park is a restroom. I think so. I think all of this is is good, good stuff. I don't I don't really have anything additional. I just wanted to make note of those items. So I'm 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 glad we're addressing some safety items. There's four or five, four or five items on this list that are safety related, so I think that's important as well. I don't have anything else, so if if I could get a motion to adjourn.
You first.
Mr. Bodkins, your turn.
I should do it.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Bodkins. Ms. Durbin? Call the favor?